Borough Council Work Session. Welcome, everybody, to the Bellefonte Borough Council Work Session. No council action or making motions or approvals will be taking place during the work session. Do we have a trivia question? Vice President Barb Dan.
Mr. Bernier, I am very sorry, but I do not have a trivia question tonight.
April's over. I wish.
All right. Items for discussion: PSAB resolutions.
I'll just quickly say this is the time of the year when we could, it's optional, but we could submit a resolution to the State Boroughs Association. They have a conference in June. Prior to that, they review all resolutions submitted, and then they're voted on by delegates from boroughs across the state. So I put in information that, from previous years, to give you examples of what has already been submitted. So if you know or want to discuss anything, we can do that. We only have a few minutes, but we're happy to discuss that. And I would make sure the concept is submitted to the Boroughs Association. The deadlines, I believe, this Wednesday.
Was there anything decided at the countywide one that I had to miss because I was leaving something else at the same time?
No, we failed to have a quorum at that meeting, so we didn't discuss anything. Not yet. I checked with the Boroughs Association. There is some flexibility. We will have to reschedule, find a time that works either via Zoom or what have you, find a time that works for a majority of our members here in Center County.
I would suggest that we put something out there, send them a note or something, what their availability would be, and if they'd rather just do it by Zoom, that's fine.
We're going to, Randy. We were off Friday. Today, we focused on the council meetings. But yes, we're going to do exactly what you're saying.
All right, next is the council chambers layout.
In particular, we tried different setups with the tables, the desks. We're still getting used to the room. We're tweaking things as we go. We're looking for your feedback on how you, what you prefer, what you like or don't like, including the position of the table, location of the table in the room. We can still tweak things, but once we get it settled, we like to say that's it. And then if we have surplus items, we'll look at maybe getting rid of surplus items or what have you.
I'll start. I think, based on with our Spring Creek Watershed Meeting Thursday morning, we set up from the podium here and turned this table around, and then we talked to the folks out here and had it on the wall behind us, in front of us. And it worked well. The echoing was not bad at all in the middle part. I'm thinking, if you look at how we are now, we're way back here trying to talk way out there. And if we could get this thing in the middle where we're looking out at the door as people come in, and the chairs are up this way, and a little bit more closer together, less room going that way and using this room, with the podium even staying where it's at now for people to come up and speak, I think would be fine. And you could still leave this here, but use that. If you're going to have somebody presenting something, it would be behind council. But I just think, if it doesn't work from there, maybe you still need to still do some damping in here. But I think, like, right now, I can hear this echo about this, and I didn't hear that on Thursday morning.
Yeah.
And we had 45 people in here.
And similarly, when I was talking to some people who watched the Zoom or the PCN, and just sitting here, sort of looking from both perspectives, having this little round table in this humongous room is intimidating to some people. And it's like, what are we hiding in this tight little circle? It doesn't feel right to me. And what people were saying to me was that the echoing is a problem, that they don't feel that they're part of the community with us way up here and them all down there.
A wonderful thing. You made me think of this. When I was looking at this on Thursday, I thought, these long tables that we have sitting around could be where we sit at, at those tables.
This might go better, go back across the street.
I also attended the meeting last Thursday and sat in the audience on an aisle seat, basically, to view this arrangement from that perspective. And from the back of the room, this disappears. You can't, you can barely see the tops of people's heads. The acoustics were okay unless somebody in the audience was having a cross-conversation. Then I couldn't hear what was going on. Also, the way the podium is staged right now, it completely obliterates the view of this side of the council table. So I like Randy's idea of maybe shifting things around a little bit so there's a shorter distance between us and the audience, and also open this up somehow so that we're not, this seems like a private conversation rather than a community meeting. And can we go back to the old microphones that were flat things on the table?
Those belong to CNET. They only work for CNET purposes, but not for us to talk into the speakers.
Looks like we're short a couple of microphones, correct?
I think because of the coziness, we eliminated a few.
Okay, okay, because I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, once we get it situated, we can go back and everybody can have their own. But we were just, again, experimenting.
Great, thank you.
Anything else about the chambers layout? Next is the compost facility. Mr. Oldman, you have something on that?
I'd like to continue the discussion on the layout, because I don't think we resolved anything. You had three, we had three different setups, one with the big tables or the big desks, then the second one, we had a square, and then now this. The question that we want to know, so we can finish this, this isn't even finished yet. We have the panels off because we're waiting to determine whether or not this council wants to keep this thing here or not. So I heard Joanne say, move it back over. Okay, if we move it back over, do we go back just to the way it was the second time? Because the first time I heard it was, everyone was too far away. So we would like to have some consensus, I think, on direction so we can get this resolved before the next meeting.
As I had said, take these longer tables and put them up for this wall where the council would sit. We have, I think, enough tables that would cover the folks that would sit there, and maybe even bring it kind of out a little bit so everybody can be seen front-faced instead of side-faced, back of the heads and things like that. But...
Do we have enough for 13 chairs?
I think you do.
Just picking up on what we're saying, we can experiment with those two tables and then the rectangular tables that we had prior to this table for maybe the next couple of meetings. And, you know, location, and just set this aside. This sounds like this isn't working. So let's eliminate this as a possibility.
We can move the rectangular tables up. They don't have to be back here.
Yes.
They could be moved up to the, as far as you want.
Yeah.
That's what we're suggesting.
Sure.
I know you can get at least four people at a table. And you have three tables.
All right.
And there may be another table like that sitting around somewhere.
There may. So we'll check and see what we have, go from there. But we'll eliminate this kind of as a long-term possibility and start looking at...
These chairs, however, are great.
We kind of thought that that's where you would go with the chairs.
Don liked them. I like those wooden chairs.
Doesn't really matter. That's another thing. The final round was installed.
Yes.
Yeah, but the additional ones that were purchased are now in.
For what we ordered. Now, I'm not going, we talked about not going above and beyond at the last meeting. So what we've ordered is now in. Now, our sound guy is going to attend the meeting on the 15th and tweak things and that kind of thing. So...
The speakers are mounted too high.
Yes. The sound guy?
The sound guy?
Yes.
In the design phase, they were brought up about five feet.
No, he said they're five feet higher than they should be. He said they should...
So in the design, they were five feet lower.
Yeah, yeah. So we're saying the same thing. Yes, yes. Yes, yes.
I think, Doug, what I think what we're saying is, is let's let Chaz come in on the 15th, I think it is, the next meeting, and try to adjust the sound system to maximize the sound. And after that, if we still have this, if we still have this echo, then the next step would be move the, lower the speakers, five feet or six feet.
Yes.
If you're, if you think that's the, I mean, it would save the time and cost of moving those if he can fix it just by adjusting the system.
I don't think you're going to eliminate the echo with the sound detonating boards that you have existing.
Maybe not. Maybe we'll need more.
Volume more after you've...
It's a big room, Doug. We're not saying it isn't. We try to go conservative on how many and how much to spend. So that's where we're at. I can always add more if council approves more.
Okay, Ken, now do you want me to talk about the compost?
If you're good on the arrangement of the room.
I think we can do some things here. All right. So the compost facility, what we were looking for is, as everyone knows, we ended up purchasing bags, a bagging system with the last 902 DEP grant that we received. So we're going to probably begin bagging compost. Again, we'll mention during the meeting this Saturday, we're having anyone that comes and sees the, to view what we have down at the Musser Lane site now, will have an opportunity to look at it and can walk away with a free bag of compost to see how they like it. But in the past, we've always allowed people that had pickup trucks and everything to come in and load a pickup truck for free. Of course, we're charging, we're going to be charging $5 a bag on the compost now. So I guess we just had questions and wanted to kind of come to council to get some direction on whether or not we still want to continue with the free compost or just bag everything and go that direction. So just open for some thoughts. All we're looking for is some thoughts at this point.
What are the bags made out of?
It's the same type of material that you would find like at Lowe's or Home Depot.
Is that plastic? Is it hemp or what? Is it a cloth?
Plastic.
Okay, it's plastic. And we have long given people a chance. If they want to fill up the back of their trunk of their car, they can come in for free. So is this charge of $5 just to purchase the bag? Or is that a charge to have one of our staff fill up a bag and give it to them?
The bags will be filled. They'll be working on that all summer long. So the idea is, is that we'll have a large quantity, and then when people want them, they would come to the borough, say, I want 20 bags of compost. They'll pay for it, and then they get out and pick it up.
But if we do this, then there would no longer be, people could come in with their truck and say, I just want to fill up a truckload full?
We're not, we're not saying that. The question is, is, you know, you can, you can do both if that's what council wants.
We're looking for a policy on something other than the bags being filled. We got that figured out, $5 a bag, they're filled for you. It's like going to Lowe's and getting a bag of mulch. We're looking at, do we have a fee or is there, should there be a fee if somebody wants to go in and self-serve, fill up their vehicle, you know, however means with a shovel and fill it up and take a load of mulch? Should there be some kind of a charge for that or just let them go?
About 35 pounds, Shawna.
Oh, is that not on? Sorry. Would the bags be reusable? Do you know?
No, once you open them up, I mean, the way it goes through, the way the bags go through the bagging equipment, they get, you know, the compost will get dumped into the bag, and then it goes across, and kind of, there's a heat strip that heats the top of the bag to seal it. So once, like a bag that you'd buy from Lowe's, once you open it, that's it.
So if you're not buying a bag...
If you're not buying a bag, then you take your pickup truck or your 500-gallon karashcan, you fill it yourself, right? And then you haul it away.
We're asking if you...
Yeah, and you want to know if we're going to charge for the...
Yeah, charge or allow...
I'd say let them come.
Okay.
If they want to load your pickup with a flat shovel, go for it. And if they want to buy the bag, buy the bag. Then we pay for the bag. But if you're industrious enough to load your own truck with a half a ton or 3/4 of a ton of mulch...
And I agree with Doug here, because I think that's a good community service. It's there, it's available. Let them have it, if they're willing to do the manual labor to get it.
How has it worked in the past? Wasn't it free for people to come in?
Yeah, just like you're saying.
And it wasn't abused that we know of?
No, I don't think so. Actually, the bagging was, the idea behind bagging was, for those that didn't have a pickup truck, that there was still an option for them. If we continue to bag and we have extra, I mean, talking with the Center County Recycling and Refuge Authority, in the past, they've taken other municipalities' extra bags and helped sell them. So any funds that we get will go right back into the refuse fund.
I'm going to ask the stupid question. It's early on yet. So if a person comes in with their truck, and they've got two or three people with them, they just start throwing mulch in, what happens if they go over the weight of what the truck can haul? Do we need to do something as a liability issue, or, you know, we're not responsible for how they loaded their truck? I'm just throwing it out there, because it could happen, depending on how much help they have to load. I'm going to say not to do it, but I'm just curious about that question.
I don't have a good answer, other than we have general liability on the property. But, I mean, even our own staff had questions. What if somebody hurts themselves loading or has a medical issue? Are we going to be liable? I mean, there's always a possibility. But we, like I say, we're not negligent. We didn't, you know, we have, and we have general liability on the property. We can do it as a season trial basis and tweak things at the end of the season if you want to.
Randy, I don't think it's a whole lot different than going to the transfer station with a pickup truck and unloading the stuff in your pickup truck and throwing it over the wall to be disposed of. When you're doing that, sort of, there's some liability. But I think once they leave the property and they're overloaded, it would be the responsibility of the vehicle operator. But that's just, I'm sure somebody could figure out a way to blame it on the borough.
We don't have any signage, you know, related to that.
Maybe that would be the way to go, just post-signage, load at your own risk.
Yeah, good idea.
Anything else?
Yeah, that's great. We're good.
Any other comments for the work session? That determines the Bellefonte Work Session. That determines the Bellefonte work session. That determines the Bellefonte work session. The Bellefonte Borough Council Business Meeting. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Benier.
Sorry. Mr. Benier, present. Mr. Brackville.
Present.
Ms. Clayton.
Here.
Ms. Dan.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. McKean.
Here.
Ms. Purnell.
Here.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Here.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Here.
Mr. Larson.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Next is additions to the council business meeting. Anybody has any additions to the council meeting that we could consider? If not, we'll move on to public comment. If you have public comment, and you're here tonight, please come up, state your name, the podium, and please keep your comments to three minutes. No public comment? No? All right. Anybody on council?
I have a question. I know she's actually here, but I think we all received a letter about the accident on the intersection that we're considering putting the light in. I was just wondering if there was any updates on when that light might be installed.
Sure. We actually listed that on the agenda because we got work-
Oh, is it on there?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
We were notified of the accident, and of course, we're very sorry to hear that. But we did make it a point to update our community as to the status of that project. Our design engineer, our engineer, traffic engineer, tells us that the project is nearing the end of the design phase and should be submitted to PennDOT for, as a preliminary submission next week. So, the first phase was a survey phase, and now they're in design, they're finishing that. It'll be submitted to PennDOT for review, barring any questions, probably a little bit of back and forth. I believe the next phase would be going to, preparing a bid package, and then going out to bid, so.
My apologies for missing that. I must have skimmed and missed that part.
No problem. I was going to bring it up, because we were also, I also received a phone call about the accident. Thank you.
Can I say one more thing, since we don't do comment at the end?
Sure.
I just wanted to wish my brother-in-law Rodney a happy belated birthday, and since it's April Fool's Day, I figured it was a good time to prank him a little bit on that.
So, Ralph, what is that again?
Yes.
What, in layman's terms, where's the traffic-
Well, in layman's terms, I mean, this project has to go through certain phases. We have a special traffic-related engineer on board, and the first phase was trying to do an updated survey of that intersection. That was done. And then, of course, in the meantime, data from previous accidents, and those kinds of things have been looked at, reviewed, submitted to PennDOT, and discussed with PennDOT. And they finished that phase, and now they're in the design phase. The good news is, we already have a turning lane there. It's a relatively simple intersection to install a traffic light, or traffic signal. But they're looking at that. They are coordinating with the schools project, because typically, we know we're going to have two lights close by. So typically, these lights talk to each other, you know, with electronics. We're making sure that, you know, that everything's compatible. But there is some coordination with that project. It has to be, because they're running their own traffic studies, and all this gets submitted to PennDOT. So, they tell me that, you know, the school has submitted their data just recently, and now the design, again, can enter its final stages and go to PennDOT. PennDOT reviews everything, approves everything, issues what's called a highway occupancy permit at the end of the project, and then we build a specification for bidding, and we go out to bid, find a contractor, install the light, and then the light's operational. So, it's a lengthy process, but that's what it involves.
Ken, I have a question.
Yes.
Related to that. So, we have two lights close together. The school board has submitted theirs to PennDOT. We've submitted, or submitting ours to PennDOT. Will the two of these be timed to be done simultaneously, or because we started ours earlier, will we be able to get this put in sooner rather than later?
There's no reason they have to be done simultaneously. What we're doing, because we know the other light's coming, it's going to be later than ours, is, as I say, the controlled panel will be able to talk to the other control panel, because these lights have to be in sync when it's all said and done. The timing of the lights have to work together. So, we're just making sure that our, you know, control system is compatible with whatever the school puts in. And we get, they get advice from PennDOT on how to do that. And then maybe they make the box a little bit bigger, so that, you know, there's room for adjustment, if necessary. But there's no need, and there's no, there's no reason for us to hold up our project. And the school is not holding up the project. We can put our light in ahead of their light, and when they're getting close to the end of their project, they can put their light in.
That's what I wanted to hear, and I'm sure that's what the public wanted to hear as well. Thank you.
Sure.
Next on our agenda is communications. Written.
The first one is just a report from the Center County Recycling and Refuge Authority. That's their February report for your information. The second, I'm sorry.
Next is the Center County Active Transportation Plan Public Engagement Period, which begins March 19th and runs through May 3rd. The CCMPO invites you and the public to participate in filling out the survey and utilizing the web mapping application on the project's website, which is a long one.
Yes. So, what we'll do, to save you from trying to read that, Ken, is we'll post this on our website, that it's available with this link. It's a very long, lengthy link, but we'll post it on our website, so citizens can do the survey.
Okay. Again, that runs from March 19th through May 3rd. That's it for communications. Any questions? Next is the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be acted upon by one single motion. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
I'd actually like to pull the meeting minutes, if we could, please.
And I'd like to pull their invoice.
Okay.
Easy.
Just do a motion and a second, one at a time, Ken.
Well, there's only two items.
They want to break them up.
Okay. So, can I have a motion and a second to approve the council meeting minutes for February 20th, 2024?
I'll make that one.
Thank you. Questions?
I wanted to make a comment on the original meeting minutes that were submitted to us for review before they were modified. There's a section on page two where there are, I guess it's one long sentence that was deleted. And just thinking about that, I was kind of hoping in the future that maybe the office staff could notate things that are being deleted from the original minutes typed up, maybe with a strikeout, and maybe things that are being added by a council member with maybe a different color or something, so that we can see what things are being changed. Because I believe the sentence that was taken out should still stay, and I can read the sentence to you, if you like. This is under the North Penn Street situation. The sentence that was taken out was, "It was also suggested that council should trust the professionals who are hired to complete these projects, that the projects will be completed appropriately and responsibly, and the council should trust the borough staff is thorough in their research of proposed projects." And I see no reason that that should have been taken out, because that was discussed. And I think it's important for us to keep remembering that there are professionals that are working on these projects, that we need to trust them to make the correct decisions. So, I would like to leave that sentence in there.
And I oppose that, because if you look at that clearly, we have a policy to not make personal attacks, and I looked upon that as a general attack on what individual members of council were thinking at the time. So, that was why I requested that it be removed. It is inappropriate, I believe, to say that you're not, that, in this particular case, it was saying that I didn't trust what the officials were saying. That was never what I said, and I do not believe that that kind of sentence should remain in the minutes. If you want it to remain, then it needs to be rewritten, so that it doesn't do a personal attack on a council member.
There is nowhere in there that mentions anybody's name.
No, it doesn't. But if you were in the meeting, we know that that sentence was placed in there because it was a personal attack on me, even though my name is not mentioned, and I do not want it in there.
You could make a public response in this meeting, that you don't agree with that being-
I just did.
Okay, so, okay. Any other discussion? So, we have to approve it by vote?
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna need a, if she wants that put in, you're gonna have to have an amendment.
Done. Is that something that can be done, like, in the future, or do you want it amended for that?
Well, I would like that sentence put back in there, because, like I said, it was discussed during the meeting, and I think that's important to note, that it was discussed.
So, does everybody understand what Reed is asking? Okay.
The best course of action probably would be an amendment, a motion and a second for an amendment.
And then, there was a two-part thing, then, too, also, was that I would like to see strike-throughs, and then maybe different colored text in the future, when something is amended from the original minutes, because sometimes I read the original minutes, and I think, okay, that's what's going to be in there, and then I come back and look at the amended, and something's gone. I was like, wait, what happened to that? So, I think that would be fair to see what is being taken out and added.
Okay. So, I'm going to ask for an amended motion to include what Ms. Purnell has stated. She'd like that statement put back in the minutes, and then in future, in the future, she would like them noted in a different way, so that they can clearly be seen as to whether they were put in or taken out, basically is what she's saying.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I make a motion to my own motion? Can I make the-
Yeah.
Okay. So, I will make that motion.
I need a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Barbara. Now we can vote.
Mr. Benier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Absolutely not!
Next is the Stover-McLaughlin invo-
We have to approve the original motion. That was the amendment. So, we have to approve the minutes in general, right? Is that my, is that correct?
Yes.
I'm seeing some yeses.
Okay. So, now we need a motion and a second to approve the original minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Dan?
Okay. Mr. Benier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
No!
Next is the Stover-McLaughlin invoice, March of 2024. Need a motion and a second, and then discussion.
I'll make the motion, Dr. Bill.
I can second it, but Dan?
Okay, discussion?
I just had a brief question. Is, and Ralph, maybe this is for you. Are you the one that approves all of these, or does it just go right to being paid? Just curious.
I look it over and see which account it should be addressed. Some are the general funds, some might be water-related, or parks-related, what have you. So, I look it over from that perspective.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
I do, too. If he doesn't, Barb, I do a lot of them, where I'll do that, too, so I wanted you to know.
Great. No, thank you. I just never asked that question.
I wonder, too, doesn't Lori sort of keep an eye on that as well, after you two say, okay, she triple checks what you guys-
Yes. She wants to know what fund it comes out of and all that.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Benier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Next is the reports. First is the mayor. Is a proclamation?
Thank you. A Pennsylvania 811 Safe Digging Month proclamation. Whereas the month of April 2024 is recognized as Pennsylvania 811 Safe Digging Month, and the initiative sponsored by Pennsylvania 811, the Utility Notification Information Center, with 52 years of continuous service to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and whereas Pennsylvania 811 received a million excavation notifications in 2023, over 3,000 construction projects in coordinate PA, and transmitted approximately 6 million notifications to their member facility owners and operators, allowing essential utility and construction crews to provide vital underground services and repair of critical infrastructure to communities throughout Pennsylvania. And whereas contacting 811 at least three business days prior to digging, a homeowner or contractor is connected to a unique service that notifies the appropriate underground utility operators in the municipality in which the work will be performed. And whereas by notifying 811 of their intent to dig, the homeowner or contractor is knowingly helping to protect the underground utilities, themselves, the work crew, and their neighbors, from any unsafe digging practices with their community. And whereas upon receiving the notification from Pennsylvania 811, the facility owners and operators disperse to the said work site to mark the appropriate location of their underground utilities with lines, flags, paints, or both, to establish an 18-inch tolerance zone of the outside wall or edge of their line and facility. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Buddy Johnson, Mayor of the Borough of Bellefonte, Pennsylvania, in support of the Pennsylvania Underground Utility Line Protection Law, encourage all Pennsylvanians to visit the Pennsylvania 811 website for information about digging safely. Thank you.
Next is junior council member report. Mr. Larson?
Yes. So, my report today is pretty short. We're in that long stretch from the end of year activities. So, right now, the fourth quarter has just begun, and we're operating on a normal schedule. We have a student store that just opened. That's student-made and student-run, so it's really exciting for us, because it's one of the first that's ever been in our school district. In addition, the underclassmen prom is scheduled for May 4th, and that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Next is the Office of Community Affairs. The report was submitted by Ms. Thompson. Anybody have any questions relative to that? She has all her dates in there. Okay, that's it for reports. Next is the current and old business. On Saturday, April 6th, Bellefonte Borough staff will demonstrate the operation of our compost bagging equipment the borough recently purchased with the assistance of DEP 902 grant. This demonstration will occur at the Musser Lane composting site near the compost pad. Borough residents may show up anytime between 10:00 a.m. and 12:00 p.m. to see the equipment in operation and learn how the borough is generating its compost from residents like you. Anyone that stops by will receive a free 35-pound bag of compost to take home with you. Again, that's going to be this Saturday, April 6th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Musser Lane compost facility. Next is the shade tree planting. Trees are to be delivered on Wednesday, April 10th, and planted on Friday, April 12th. Again, the trees will be delivered on Wednesday, April 10th, and planted on Friday, April 12th. Mr. Stewart already discussed the updated traffic light at Parkview Heights. Okay, Parkview Boulevard, excuse me, and Zion Road.
I just wanted to add that the brush containers, this pickup will start, is it the 6th, this Wednesday?
This Wednesday, the 3rd.
Along with, you discussed the bagging at the Musser Lane. This is the official weekend that it opens up from noon, or from 8:00 a.m. until 11:45 or noon, and this is the first week to set your brush and grass containers at the curbside for pickup on your normal collection day. Just wanted to remind the residents of that.
It's, the brush and grass is, it's a typical day. It's in the ordinance that it's on Wednesdays. Ralph, you might want to mention about the leaf collection.
Thank you. You know, a few years ago, we started doing a spring leaf collection, just to clean, and help people clean up the yards and that kind of thing. We're working on a schedule for that, and we'll get that out to everybody, but we're working with our public works department. We will be doing it, and we'll schedule it and get that out, those dates out to everybody.
And that's usually done the same day as their refuge pickup?
Yes.
Typically, that follows the-
Yes. The leaf collector truck follows, you know, basically the garbage truck route for your normal pickup, so, thank you.
Leaf and grass?
The leaf pickup would only be a few days. It'll be one week, max, for the spring.
Yes.
Okay. That's, I think, everything under current and old business. New business, we talked about this, the addition to the fee schedule for compost bags at Musser Lane. I need a motion and a second to approve the addition of a fee of $5 per bag, compost bag, to the Bellefonte Borough fee schedule.
I'll make that motion, Brackville.
I'll second it.
I'll second it, Clayton.
Okay, go ahead.
Roll call.
Mr. Benier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
All right. That's it under new business. Prior to adjournment, Bellefonte Borough Council held an executive committee meeting that was relative personnel matters prior to this meeting. At this time, I'm going to call for an adjournment of the Bellefonte Borough Council Business Meeting.